Let's call this meeting in order.
The city of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The city council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Pastor Mike Fanning of Heritage Christian Fellowship.
And after that, please remain standing. The Boy Scouts will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come before you today with grateful hearts. He tells us to come before you with thanksgiving. So Lord, I want to thank you for this beautiful city that we get to enjoy every day. God, I thank you for these men and women who are here to serve the people of this city. And most of all, Lord, I want to thank you for your son, for sending your son to pay for our sins on the cross. And Lord, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would come and rest on us, that you would give wisdom and revelation to what the best decisions are for this city. And we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Boys, if you can come up to the podium. As a group, you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys ready? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you guys sit down, we're going to have you introduce yourselves to the microphone.
Hello. My name is Grant.
Just no, just Grant?
Grant Harris.
Okay, Grant Harris, thank you.
My name is Bodie Horsepool.
My name is Brady Allen or Brady Danger Allen.
Brady Danger Allen.
My name is William Rudmond.
My name is Evan Harrell.
Adam Bell.
My name is Brad Prolo.
My name is Jake Horsepool.
My name is Mitch Bell.
My name is Hawk Willardson.
I'm Matthew Harrod.
My name is Richie Owens.
My name is Joseph Bell.
My name is Dallin Harrell.
My name is Jaren Harrell.
Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Donchak.
Present.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Mayor Hamm.
Here.
First item on the agenda is presentation of a commendation to Janet Dunford, Crime Prevention Specialist.
Janet, how are you?
So, you know, some of the council members like to read all these whereas', which there's a ton here. Janet's been serving this community for a very long time. One of the things I just want to highlight here was that you started with San Clemente Police Department in 1982. Wow. That is, that's absolutely incredible. And you spent your entire career here in the city of San Clemente? That's fantastic. Well, if you'd like, I'd like to have you say a couple words and then I'll give you the plaque.
Okay, okay, all right. I have a little message for everybody. Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for all your support during my 33 years in the city of San Clemente. What a wonderful city San Clemente has been for all of these years. My first job in San Clemente Police Department was in 1982, and I was a dispatcher for two years downstairs from this building, the older building. And I liked the night shift as it was busy, and when I left in the morning, I would go down to the beach to swim and then fell asleep on the sand. Now, coming from Boston, I did have a rather strong accent. The patrol guys always scratched on the radio when my Bostonian words came out over the radio, and they got lots of laughs. You can't do that now. In 1984, I became a crime prevention specialist and was now out in the community to educate our citizens and about crime and safety. Quickly, my partner and I were out many nights visiting neighborhoods and teaching safety in schools as well. The Neighborhood Watch program was flourishing, and we now have about 300 neighborhood watches. I especially enjoyed the Red Ribbon Parade, National Night Out, and Kindness Counts. We have several special things that we do during the year. The change in 1993 to the Orange County Sheriff's Department worked out very well. We had numerous lieutenants over the years, and now we have Lieutenant Moody, who's here, and which we all love. And I have enjoyed being in this community all these years. I thank the city of San Clemente, Orange County Sheriff's Department, and our great citizens and leaders. Thank you, and I hope to see you all again.
Janet, before you, Janet, before you leave, Janet, before you sit down, I just want to thank you personally from all the Neighborhood Watch folks in town who didn't have an opportunity to come, and thank you for coming into our homes and educating us on Neighborhood Watch all over town. So I want to thank you very much for that.
I just wanted to say Monday evening, we're hosting a captain, so we'll see all the neighbors. Ultimately, thank you very much.
Next is presentation of a commendation to Joseph Bell.
Hey, Joe, how are you?
Good.
Good. So we do have two Eagle Scouts on council, right? Just one? Just one?
Just one.
Tim, do you want to join me down here? So this is, this is more than just a special Eagle Scout award, right? Joseph, would you like to say a couple words exactly about what you've done and explain maybe a couple of those badges?
Of course.
Step up to the microphone.
I, well, I earned a whole lot of merit badges, so 142 to be exact. At the time that I earned them, it was all of them. They've recently added more, so, you know.
Keep moving the goal line.
So the merit badges I've earned have really helped me decide what I want to do, and they've helped me in every, or learned a bunch of random skills that, that one day I hope to be able to, so.
How rare is it, Joseph? How rare is it for everyone to get their, because I- The percentages, I think it's, oh, you have it on there? Yeah. So the percentages of Eagle Scouts, I think it's less than 3%? 5% earn their Eagle Scout. Even fewer get all 142. It's a fraction of percentage. I got the bare minimum. Like, I just ran it right up to the last merit badge. I'm like, is that it? Well, I'm done. Guys like this were, you know, amazing, because I could never do it like that. So I think that's incredibly commendable, so. And tell us about your plans. What's coming up next for you?
Well, up next, I'm applying to the Naval Academy of the United States of America, and- And after that, who knows where life may take me, because, you know, I've got all this stuff.
You could do anything. Before you step down, I just want to point out something to everybody that he's got all these merit badges on the front, but he also has the exact same amount on the inside, which I don't think I've ever seen that before. So, pretty impressive. Was that a little flex there? Did you just do a little?
The weightlifting merit badge.
Yeah, it's somewhere in there, right? Joseph, congratulations, sir.
Thanks.
Give him a follow. Harris?
Hey, Bells, come on up here. This is also yours, too. Anything like me, my mom, I'm a Eagle Scout.
You gotta hold the plaque up, too. Get it there.
Next is presentation by San Clemente High School students McKenna Brownell and Daniel Clevert concerning campus activities.
Hello again. So we're here to talk about our final month of school until we're seniors. Exciting, but for the graduating class, they're done, so lucky them. Anyways.
Okay. So-
Serve the people of this city. And most of all, Lord, I want to thank you for your son, for sending your son to pay for our sins on the cross. And Lord, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would come and rest on us, that you would give wisdom and revelation to what the best decisions are for this city. And we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Boys, if you could come up to the podium. Okay. As a group, you're going to lead us in the pledge allegiance. You guys ready? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you guys sit down, we're going to have you introduce yourselves. Here's the microphone for me.
My name is Grant.
Just no, just Grant?
Grant Harris.
Okay, Grant Harris.
Thank you.
My name is Bodie Horspool.
Thanks, Bodie.
My name is Brady Allen or Brady Danger Allen.
Brady Danger Allen.
My name is William Redmond.
My name is Evan Harrell.
Adam Bell.
My name is Brad Perolo.
My name is Jake Horspool.
My name is Mitch Bell.
My name is Hawk Willardson.
I'm Matthew Harrod.
My name is Richie Owens.
My name is Joseph Bell.
My name is Dallin Harrell.
My name is Jaren Harrell.
Thank you, guys. Here.
Councilmember Doncheck.
Present.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baker.
Here.
Mayor Hamm.
Here.
First item on the agenda is presentation of a commendation to Janet Dunford, crime prevention specialist.
Janet, how are you?
So, you know, some of the councilmembers like to read all these whereas', which there's
a ton here. Janet's been serving this community for a very long time. One of the things I just want to highlight here was that you started with San Clemente Police Department in 1982.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Back then.
That is, that's absolutely incredible. And you spent your entire career here in the city of San Clemente. That's fantastic. Well, if you'd like, I'd like to have you say a couple of words and then I'll give you the plaque.
Okay, okay, all right. I have a little message for everybody. Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for all your support during my 33 years in the city of San Clemente. What a wonderful city San Clemente has been for all of these years. My first job in San Clemente Police Department was in 1982, and I was a dispatcher for two years downstairs from this building, the older building. And I liked the night shift as it was busy, and when I left in the morning, I would go down to the beach to swim and then fell asleep on the sand. Now, coming from Boston, I did have a rather strong accent. The patrol guys always scratched on the radio when my Bostonian words came out over the radio, and they got lots of laughs. You can't do that now. In 1984, became a crime prevention specialist and was now out in the community to educate our citizens and about crime and safety. Quickly, my partner and I were out many nights visiting neighborhoods and teaching safety in schools as well. The Neighborhood Watch program was flourishing, and we now have about 300 neighborhood watches. I especially enjoyed the, enjoyed the Red Ribbon Parade, National Night Out, and Kindness Counts. We have several special things that we do during the, in the, in the year. The change in 1993 to the Orange County Sheriff's Department worked out very well. We had numerous lieutenants over the years, and now we have Lieutenant Moody, who's here, and which we all love. And I have enjoyed being in this community all these years. I thank the city of San Clemente, Orange County Sheriff's Department, and our great citizens and leaders. Thank you, and I hope to see you all again.
Thank you, everybody.
Janet, before you, Janet, before you leave, Janet, before you sit down, I just want to thank you personally, from all the Neighborhood Watch folks in town who didn't have an opportunity to come, and thank you for coming into our homes and educating us on Neighborhood Watch all over town. So I want to thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Monday evening, we're hosting a captain, so we'll see all the neighbors. Ultimately, thank you very much.
Next is presentation of a commendation to Joseph Bell.
Hey, Joe, how are you?
Good.
Good. So, we do have two Eagle Scouts on council, right? Just one? Just one?
Just one.
Tim, do you want to join me down here? So this is, this is more than just a special Eagle Scout award, right? Joseph, would you like to say a couple of words exactly about what you've done and explain maybe a couple of those badges?
Of course. Step up to the mic. I, well, I earned a whole lot of merit badges, so 142 to be exact. At the time that I earned them, there was all of them. They've recently added more, so, you know.
Keep moving the goal line.
So, the merit badges I've earned have really helped me decide what I want to do, and they've helped me in every, or learned a bunch of random skills that, that one day I hope to be able to, so.
How rare is it, Joseph? How rare is it for everyone to get their, because I...
I can have that. The percentages, I think it's, oh, you have it on there?
Yeah.
So the percentages of Eagle Scouts, I think it's less than 3%?
5% earn their Eagle Scout.
Okay.
Even fewer get all 142.
It's a fraction of percentage. I got the bare minimum. Like, I just ran it right up to the last merit badge. I'm like, is that it?
Well, I'm done. Guys like this were, you know, amazing, because I could never do it like that. So I think that's incredibly commendable, so.
And tell us about your plans. What's coming up next for you?
Well, up next, I'm applying to the Naval Academy of the United States of America, and... And after that, who knows where life may take me, because, you know, got all this stuff.
You could do anything. Before you step down, I just want to point out something to everybody that he's got all these merit badges on the front, but he also has the exact same amount on the inside, which I don't think I've ever seen that before. Pretty impressive. Was that a little flex there? Did you just do a little?
The weightlifting merit badge.
Yeah, it's somewhere in there, right? Joseph, congratulations, sir.
Thanks.
Give him a follow. Parents? Yeah. Hey, Bells, come on up here. This is, this is also yours, too. It's any like me, my mom, my mom. You gotta hold the plaque up, too. Get it there.
Next is presentation by San Clemente High School students McKenna Brownell and Daniel
Clevert concerning campus activities.
So, we're here to talk about our final month of school until we're seniors. Exciting, but for the graduating class, they're done, so lucky them. Anyways.
Okay, so we're just going to start off with sports, just listing off league champs, boys track and field, boys tennis, girls tennis, boys baseball, girls softball. So, really just, yeah, really awesome. We're always reporting on sports, and really, it's really awesome how amazing our sports teams are.
Yeah, I don't think there's a single spring sport that's not up there, except for maybe swim. I don't know. Speaking of sports, congratulations. Two of our baseball team members, Colby Allard and Lucas Herbert, went first and second round draft pick in the Major League Baseball drafts, both to the Atlanta Braves. I think Lucas is signed with them, and Colby, I'm not sure what he's doing right now, but they both went first and second round, which is unbelievable. So, go them.
All right. Are they looking for any 43-year-old middle relievers in the Braves organization?
I'll have them ask.
Yeah, you can throw that out there, just, you know, just in case.
Yes, we had, we had the choir concert, had all the choirs, and because it was the 50th year anniversary at San Clemente High School, we had the little statue, so the theater department and the choir program decided they were going to do the songs from 1965, when the school first came out. There was a lot of songs, like "Fly Me to the Moon" came out that year, "Do I Diddy", "It Takes Two", there's a lot of good stuff. It was last Friday and Saturday, I was in it, then a bunch of students did in-between acts between the songs, they did modern-day songs within the past four years, kind of to remember the seniors' life in high school and the music they listened to.
Yeah, I went on Friday night, by the way. It was amazing. It was amazing. You guys did a great job. And it was amazing how many songs did come from 1965. Every song came out, I said, I think I'm really old, because I remember that as a kid actually playing, you know, periodically.
It was a really good year.
Yeah, it was a great year.
McKenna and Daniel go to prom. We didn't go together, but we looked like we did. The theme was Cirque du Soleil San Clemente, and it was held at The Grove in Anaheim, and we had over 1,000 juniors and seniors attend, which is somewhat the highest number I think we've had in a while. So, exciting.
You guys clean up good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now to senior activities and graduation. Today, after fourth period, every single senior of the graduating class, I think over like 400 or 500 seniors jumped in the school pool. It's tradition, right after fourth period, as soon as lunch hit. So you have the Knott's Berry Farm trip, the senior sunset, so it was actually just this Monday, we have the senior picnic on the grass, and the senior brunch, where all the seniors dress up in their college attire and have a barbecue on the lawn. Graduation is this Friday, and then it should be a really awesome time. The year's dwindling down. Senior finals just ended, so now it's just going to be these, the rest of the week, it's just the juniors and the sophomores and the freshmen, so the parking lot will be very empty, but it should be a good time at the end of the year.
And I think 183 seniors are graduating with valedictorian this year, which is over 4.0, and that's just an incredibly high number.
Yes.
So, very good class, 2015. And...
Happy summer.
See you next year.
Well, hey, guys, we got a...
I know what I'm getting rid of you this year, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, unfortunately, I'm new three years, right?
We'll see about that.
Daniel, I feel like I see you all the time at Maggots. You play every event. Are you guys doing the graduations?
Yeah, I'll be playing guitar graduation.
Figures. Well, these are just cool certificates recognition for you guys coming out this year and updating us in the community and what's going on in San Clemente, so thank you guys very much. McKenna.
Thank you very much.
You guys have done a fantastic job.
There, you know, let's get pictures of Fred here. He's going to walk. Hold it, you gotta hold it to your flag, slight angle forward, so next year you'll be professional. Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. See you next year.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for Oral Communications Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. We do have a few cards.
Okay, we got four cards here. The first one is Greg Lancer, and following Greg will be Holland Davis, Jeff Harris, and Josh Cunningham.
That's all right. My name is Greg Lancer. I reside in San Juan Capistrano. I recently sent an invitation to all the city council members for a very large event that I am hosting here in San Clemente on the 26th of this month. I sent the invitation to you. It's a very important event. I really wanted everyone's support. I wanted you to know about it. It is a youth addiction awareness event. We're going to have food trucks, live music. We're going to show movies, clips of two movies that were made here in San Clemente about the massive drug epidemic that's happening here. I used to say it could never happen to me or my child, but I was wrong. It happened to my child here in San Clemente. He got very involved in the drug culture, and rather than wait for him to hit rock bottom, there is no rock bottom anymore, because rock bottom nowadays is death or overdose. So I snatched him out, and I sent him to a 90-day treatment facility. He's been there about 50 days. He's doing really, really well, and we saved his life. So this event we're going to do, we're trying to get as many people as we can to come out and learn about the problem, but also, we're going to take it one step further. We're going to provide some solutions to the drug problem. One of them is, if you know of a family member or loved one that's involved in it, you don't wait for them to hit rock bottom. You snatch them out. There are amazing treatment centers available all over the United States. And number two is, there's another movie called The Other Side, and it's about a girl who chose not, in San Clemente High School, chose not to go the drug route, and what life would be like to live sober. So she created a pledge, and we're going to introduce that pledge at this event and hopefully get hundreds of kids and adults to take that pledge together, to vow to stay off of drugs and alcohol. So I wanted to add one quick thing. I'm okay on time still? That was that when I sent the invitation to all of you, I got one response, and that was, we're bouncing you over to the city planning department, because you need permits for this sort of thing. So I thought, okay, it's at a church, and it's zoned for all these things, but that's okay, I'm going to comply, but I wanted to come here today and just invite you all personally and everyone, just to let you know, it's going to be June 26, Friday night, at Heritage Church, and the event is called From Ashes to Glory.
You want to give the address?
Yes, 190 Avenida La Pata, San Clemente, just off of Pico.
Perfect.
And these are the flyers I sent to all of you. You might recognize that. It's a pretty popular graphic. It's, it's in many of the storefront windows all over town.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Holland Davis, Jeff Harris, and Josh Cunningham.
Hi, I'm Holland Davis, and I have some flyers for you guys, if I could just hand them across. I'm the pastor of Calvary Chapel here in San Clemente, and for the last, this is my bodyguard, Chris Smith. He's with Parks and Recreation. And for the last four years, we have ran an event called Love San Clemente, and I just wanted to bring it to your awareness and invite you guys to participate with us. Each year, what we did, how it kind of came about is with just a small dream to say, how could we, as local churches, get together and actually do stuff in our community that is beneficial to people, but also that would be known, that would be known and be a, be something that would be helpful to the city? And so, the first year, I contacted Chris Smith, and through that, we were given the Old Skeet Rains, where we went, we cleared it out, we painted it, and we did all kinds of stuff. We did things with, we did family gatherings, outreaches with different needy families with the military, and we started with 50 volunteers. Last year, I think we had 250 volunteers with, and we built little free libraries in different schools and neighborhoods. We, we did a community outreach on base at Camp Pendleton with the military families. We fed the poor, we collected food from the neighborhoods for fam. We went and rallied troops to go and, and, you know, basically help fam out. And all in all, we did beach cleaning, we had about 10 or 12 different projects. And so this year, we, we never know how many, but this year, we have had a bunch of community groups join in with us. And so, through Denise Obrero's efforts, she's connected us with like the Del Comercial District, with Casa de Seniors, and so we're going to be doing some beautification projects in the city this year. We've even built classrooms for schools. I mean, it's got, it's just been incredible what the volunteer base has been able to do. And so, we're having a kickoff July 8 at Vista Hermosa Park that Denise and her department is sponsoring. The Kiwanis are sponsoring our shirts this year, our T-shirts, and so we're really excited about that. And each year just keeps growing, and so we want to invite you guys to come out and be a part of it with us. And look at our website, lovesanclemente.com, find a project that you can sign up with and come alongside of us, and so just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done so far.
All right.
Jeff Harris.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. And Jeff Harris, resident of San Clemente. I'm here because it's a very, it's a kind of dangerous situation where I live. I live in the Velogio Two neighborhood of, in Rancho San Clemente, and we live, our, our street comes on to Caí del Cerro, which is a very, it's on a hill, and we're right up near the top of the hill. And the problem is, is that when you try to exit our, our community on, from Caí Sol on to Caí del Cerro, I've got a, got a couple of these drawings to show you exactly what I'm talking about. The, if you come on to, then everybody could look at that, and, and then you can, it'll be more clear.
And proceed.
Okay. So anyway, there's a, we're right up near the top of a hill, and the cars are speeding down the hill at about 40 to 50 miles an hour. Now, the speed limit there is 35, and some, there's one place it's 40, but they get going 50, 50, maybe 55 even, and so we have a lot of near accidents. We've had one recently. Some people were going to come, and I don't think they could make it, because the council meeting got moved forward. But anyway, they, they've had a lot of near accidents, and you look up the hill, because we're right near the top of the hill, we can't, the problem, part of the problem is, too, is that the car's coming over the hill, going westbound on Caí del Cerro, they can't see over the top of the hill, they can't see us either until they're right on us. But they're going so fast, so we look up, up the hill east, and we don't see anything. So then we start to make our turn. As soon as we turn, they're just on us, and it's almost an accident. So we, we've thought about it, and we, and here on the chart, it shows that Vista Montana has a stop sign, or a stop on, for those cars coming out of that section, and, but if there was a stop sign on Caí del Cerro, right at the same intersection, they'd have to stop, and then they couldn't be going so fast as they go right by us, and it wouldn't be as dangerous. And so this has been, would really help a lot. There is a current sign that say flashing a yellow light, and it's, it's where on this drawing, it says blind spot. It's right about that area. So cars going westbound, what they see is a flashing yellow light and a diagram showing an intersection, which they just disregard. They, that doesn't mean a thing to them. So they really need to stop, and then, and it would also help those other people, because sometimes the people in the afternoon from the businesses are coming in such volume. Lately, the traffic has gotten worse and worse. So I have a petition here that I gathered of all the residents, or as many as I could get in about two weeks, 80%, there's 81 residences, each signature is for one home. So I got 66 signatures, all asking, I think I could have gotten everybody.
Mr. Harris, we have your contact info, and the city manager took it down, and we'll have somebody from staff reach out to you and see what potential offices we have for that area.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing our attention, sir.
Thank you.
Josh.
Good evening. I just wanted to come and tell you that the car show that we had over Sunday was a huge success. We wanted to thank the city on behalf of the Downtown Business Association for helping us with the space. The extra space that we did receive was used for a family zone, kind of spread out the congestion from the years that we've previously had. So it was, I thought it was a huge success. It was a lot of fun. We had over 300 cars. I don't know where they pulled this estimate, but they said estimated 60,000 people. Take that lightly, because I don't know who told me, they might have just made that up, but we did have a lot of people. We increased our shuttle schedule as well, so next year, we're going to increase that even more, just to help alleviate any of the foot traffic and some of that. But overall, just wanted to say thanks. It was, it was great. We had a lot of fun, and we couldn't have done it without the extra help that you guys gave us, so.
Josh, I was down there all day, and I did the judging in the morning. One of the things that I heard from multiple drivers was, next year, I guess, did everybody come off Olavista this year?
Yeah, we, we had an issue, because with 300 cars and a few on standby, next year, we're looking at different access points to where, instead of doing it all at one time, we're going to do a little bit different and spread it out, because next year, I think we're going to even have more, so.
Okay. The thought was, too, that whatever street they come on on, if it's Olavista, that you can have half the cars go left, half the cars go right, and so I guess there was a problem with overheating a lot of the cars.
Yeah, yeah. We got, apparently, roadsters aren't supposed to sit going 2, 2 miles an hour or zero, so we realized that, and it'll be different.
Okay.
But it was a lot of fun.
I'm glad it worked out.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Come in, counsel, I'm doing a job well done. It only, only took us a couple of years to figure that one out, but we nailed it, so.
Could we have a motion waiving reading in full?
So moved. Second, motion by Brown, second by Hammel's in favor. Aye. Posed. Passes 5-0.
Close session. Report, city attorney.
Thanks, mayor and council. I did want to report that under item B, initiation of litigation, that council authorized us by unanimous consensus to initiate nine cases. There was no one here when we convened, so I wanted to announce now that further information about those cases will not be disclosed over concerns about our ability to effectuate service of process. That's it.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. The public has requested the removal of item 6M.
Lori? Tim? Kathy? Bob?
I was also going to pull M, H, M, N, and Q.
H? One more time.
Hotel Mike November Quebec.
November. What was that last one? Quebec? I like that. I don't know if I've ever used Quebec before, but that's good. Okay?
You learned that in the neighborhood.
Move the balance.
Second, that, motion by Doncheck, second by Hammel's in favor. Aye. Posed. Passes 5-0. Item 6H.
H has an awful lot of stuff in it that, yeah.
Hi, Tom.
Hi, good evening. Hi, Tom Frank, engineering, transportation.
We can do a roundabout on Del Cerro, Tom? I'm kidding. Bob's going to ask you to recite all these projects by memory.
All right.
Well, matter of fact, there are a lot of roundabout things in here. I mean, we talk about roundabouts about four different times that I counted. We also talk about a tunnel under the freeway. We talk about an awful lot of things that, that, that are going to be difficult to do. It seems like some of these things are pushed out for a very long time, but I'm concerned about some of these getting written down on paper, and then maybe in a couple of years, they come to, why haven't we funded the tunnel under the freeway for $10 million? How do we handle this kind of stuff, Tom? Where does this, where do these things, where do they stop? How do you stop things like that?
Right. So the concern is that somebody sees a project listed, a candidate project on the seven-year CIP, and then they think it might be vetted in some way, or they're, they're then tracking it to see when it will come to fruition?
Yes.
Is that the concern? Okay, well, what, I think the first thing is to realize why we're going through this exercise. Every year, to receive our eligibility for M2 funds, there's a series of things which we need to do to submit to OCTA, this being one of them. So what they're asking for is, of course, our own five-year CIP, which the projects are included in the seven-year CIP list, in addition to other projects, which we believe are candidate projects that we consider, that we're looking for funding on, like grant funding on, but...
What kind of projects? What was the adjective you used?
Candidate.
Candidate.
Candidate, right.
Candidate.
So it's a candidate project, right.
Candidate.
So it's a project that hasn't been studied yet. We'd still have to go through the, the public process to determine... We'd still have to go through the, the public process to determine if it's feasible. It's really just a wish list. The reason why there's so many projects on here, projects that obviously we can't afford, and some of them might not come to fruition for twenty years, or may never come to fruition. But it's really a wish list. If there's a big, like, federal program that goes out for transportation improvement programs or something, then this list would likely go then to SCAG, and then SCAG would forward it to the feds, and then possibly we might get some kind of a grant funding program out of it. So that's the reason why there's so many projects on this list, and so many candidate projects. And with regards to the comment about roundabouts, most of those projects that mention roundabouts, roundabouts is just one alternative for intersection control. The first step would be to go through the public process, public community workshops, get public input, see what they're interested in for intersection control, for that particular intersection, and then move from that point. There's many locations, roundabouts, obviously, just one alternative for intersection control, along with signals and always stops, and of course, just a free intersection. So hopefully, that answered most of your questions.
Yeah, yeah, that does. Well, there's one particular project in here that, that seems to be singled out for a tremendous amount of funding, and that is the alleys. That's, that's here on page eight H dash four. And, and, I mean, I can understand spending some money in the alleys. I'm having a hard time choking down three million dollars in the alleys, though. To me, that, an allocation of that size, we need to really talk about that at this body. I mean, if we're actually gonna plan on doing that kind of work in the alleys, I, I wanna have some, I wanna have more input in it than I've had so far. Are we, what's the schedule for that, how's that proceeding?
Right now, there is absolutely no funding available for the alleyways. And if you look up in that upper right-hand box, you'll see kind of the, the funding sources and percents committed, and you'll see it's completely unfunded.
Okay.
So we actually have to input this into a database, and I believe they prioritize the listings of the projects. But I'd like to put this towards, towards the back of the candidates list, because it's, in no means is it a staff priority, and I haven't heard anything from council yet on, on it being a priority. So I, I don't consider this candidate project to have any more significance than, than any other unfunded project.
Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. I, I, I do like the, the candidate projects that were in here that are funded, that talk about traffic signals and signal synchronization in town, because, boy, you talk about bang for your buck, I think that's a great way to do that. So I'm glad to hear you say that, Tom.
And I'd just like to say, Tom gave an excellent explanation of how this works. We're competing with all the other cities in Orange County, and so we need to be in the database to be competitive. But these are ideas at this point, there's a huge process, and, you know, time is also a huge variable. And I agree that the traffic signal synchronization is our big opportunity, right?
With that, I'll move the item, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Motion by Baker, second by Doncheck, all's in favor? Aye, opposed, passes five, zero. M?
Yeah, M is the, M is the golf course amendment. And I noticed Mr. and Mrs. Cook and, and young Vinnie here in the audience, I thought maybe one of them might like to say a couple of words about that.
Hi, my name's Dave Cook. I live at one fifty West Avenida Cornelio. I've lived there, lived in town since nineteen sixty-six. Maybe a quick, little funny story, as we were driving into town as a kid, I looked, I drove by the high school, and I asked my dad, I go, what's a Skitron? Oh, it's S.C. Triton, so. No, anyway. Mr. Mayor, city council, ladies and gentlemen, golf committee, I'm just very happy to get the concession for another five years. I've really enjoyed my career here. It's, it's been a long time. We've been through the good times and the bad times, a little time in the tent was kind of fun. But we weathered the storm, it worked out okay. And in all honesty, I'm really not ready to retire, so I appreciate James and Eric, you know, giving me the opportunity for another five years. My wife's not ready for me to retire either, so. And I got a fairly young staff, and I don't think they want me to retire either, so. I got a new grandkid too, so I, he doesn't know it yet, but I don't think he's two months old, he doesn't want me to retire either, so. So anyway, I appreciate all your kindness, and, you know, I think the negotiations went pretty smooth, and I appreciate Eric and James taking the time and going through stuff, and it went fairly smooth, I thought. So I just want to thank you guys very much, and Bob, and, you know, Dick Veal, and Gus Nelson, and the restaurant, I think we're all getting along pretty good right now. So hopefully, it'll be a good five years, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Dave, before you sit down, you know, I was reading through the agenda report. Can you just give us a little bit of history about how your father took it over in sixty-six, and how it transitioned to you?
Yeah, well, we, we moved here in sixty-six, it was the winter, and I remember my brother and I, you know, he took it over, and, you know, he sent my brother and I out on the driving range, and there were weeds about that high around the fence. And my brother and I, on our hands and knees, throwing, you know, old golf balls and stuff. He was, my dad was behind us in a morgue, and we gotta get where he can pick this range, you know, that was our first step. But my dad was the pro at, he was an assistant pro at, at Santa Anita for years, and then he moved to Glendora. And he almost got the El Niguel job. It came down to he and another guy, and they, they actually took the other guy. They wanted, they wanted my dad to partner up, and I think it was about sixty-five. He wanted to partner up with somebody at El Niguel, and, and my dad says, I don't like this partner stuff. And so they got word back at Glendora that he was leaving, so they said, well, you better get another job, because you're out of here, so. But then the next year, San Clemente came up, and, and we got San Clemente, and it's, it's been a nice ride. It's been a great, growing up in this town, it's, you know, I was a little inland-er from, you know, I moved to town, I was thirteen years old, and, you know, I mean, you know, oh, you're an inland-er, you know, so. But, but I got my nice little surfboard, started surfing, and, you know, it's, I'm glad to be here, man, I love this town, it's great.
Is that fifty years then of Cook management, is that right?
Yeah, well, I think.
Sixty-five?
Sixty-six, I think my dad got the job in sixty-six, and I think I became the head professional in eighty-one, so.
Wow. Next year, are we gonna do deals on Dave? It's half, half off the fifty-year anniversary, is that what's gonna happen here?
We could do that.
Who was, who was the guy that your father took over?
Bill Mast.
Bill Mast.
He was, I think he moved to Idaho, or, and he kind of, I think he's still alive, I think he lives in Arizona. He's kind of, I think they had, I think the, well, I don't know about before Bill, though.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to say on behalf of city council, I know I'm happy with everything you're doing down there, and thank you for doing it, and I know there's another generation of Cooks that's down there on the course, so it's, it's pretty cool.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Bob.
We do have a card on this.
With, oh, sorry.
Yeah. Dick? I don't know how you're gonna follow that up, we got half-off day next year, so.
I just, I was, I'm Dick Vale, I'm on the golf, golf committee for the city. And I just want to say, I was kind of a interim liaison between Dave and the city, and I had to work a little bit with James and Eric. And I can't tell you how smooth it was, and how grateful I am, and golfers everywhere here in San Clemente are that Dave got his contract. The, people don't realize what Dave does. Everybody who goes into that pro shop is a friend of Dave's. Everybody in town who plays golf is a friend of Dave's. The people who you don't know are friends of Dave's are the people that work the, at the, the Boys and Girls Club, the nonprofits that have golf tournaments. And Dave, every year, tirelessly donates money, time, effort, and services to all our events, whether it's the Boys and Girls Club, it's FAM, it's, it's the Boys and, you know, the beaches and parks, whatever it is. And so, in behalf of all of us, thank you for the contract.
Perfect, thanks, Dick.
Thanks for helping with the facilitation too, Dick, that was really helpful.
With that, I'll move the item.
Second.
Oh, okay, motion by Baker, second by Ward, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes five, zero. Item N?
Item N. And.
Cops grant?
Yeah, I just, I just want to talk about, I'm good with the cops grant. I'm using this as a lead-in to a suggestion for a couple of programs in town, Dave. This is a, this, this cops thing is terrific, but one of the things that I read a lot about and really disturbs me is the amount of distracted driving and the number of very serious accidents caused by those kind of things. They're not all preventable, but some of them are. And can we have a program here at city council? Can you have some of your traffic guys come up here and talk to us, show us some slides, do a little presentation so the folks at home can see something that speaks about things like distracted driving and other safety issues in town? I'd like to see if we could maybe get some of that here at city council, and maybe get some, some presentations from you guys about some safety issues that we can, you know, show the folks at home how to do some things safer.
That's not a problem, we can put that together and have that for you in, in quick time.
Thanks, and no rush, just any, just on a continuing basis, we'd like to see, we'd like to see more of that, keeping the town safe.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll move the item.
Thanks, Chief Moody. I'll second that, motion by Baker, second by Ham, all's in favor? Aye. Opposed, passes five, zero. Item Q.
Yeah, item Q, we had discussions about turf removal two weeks ago too, and, and allowing it to turn brown. Is that the proposal here, are we gonna let this turn brown and not do anything until November? Or are we gonna proceed with this?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Bill Cameron, Public Works Director. The intent is to get this landscaping in as quick as possible because of the grant funding. We have a deadline to meet. That's why we brought it to you tonight, kind of as a semi-urgency item, so that we could meet the end of June, early July deadline for the installation to receive the grant.
We understood at the last meeting that there was some, the governor has said we're not allowed to plant anything until November, so.
I'll defer to Dave Rimsor, who knows more about the ordinance than I do.
In this case, they're gonna put in decomposed granite, so there's gonna be no planting in that location, or both locations, yes.
Okay, wonderful.
I think we talked about using the medians as a place to let the turf go brown as kind of a demonstration, and a place over at the community center as an example of where the grass is going brown.
Right.
And show the community what we're up to.
Okay.
And we're also making up some signs that were suggested to be installed, about that we're letting this go brown.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Before you move this, how many more areas are we, are we expecting staff's gonna bring to council? It seems to me we have a lot of areas of town that, you know, could see something like this happen.
Well, part of it is, was mentioned at the last council meeting, we're not totally sure what the MWD Metropolitan Water District's guidelines will be in the future, because they, they've placed a limitation on it. And I haven't heard what, whether we're eligible for multiple projects or just one project in the twenty-five to fifty thousand dollar range.
Well, regardless of that, to Bob's point, is there any, is there any potential for some other areas where we could let grass go brown or yellow?
I'm sure there are.
I know there's areas, but is staff gonna bring more, forward more of those, or no? Are we not anticipating it?
I think we're doing some more evaluation of that right now. And we can bring that back to the council in a future report.
Okay, great, thanks, gentlemen.
With that, I'll move the item.
Second, motion by Baker, second by Ham, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes five, zero. We'll take a quick five-minute break, we'll be back at seven-ten. To reconvene in the meeting?
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is a continued public hearing to consider an amendment to CUP 8011, U-Haul Left Turn Lane located at 310 Pico, and staff is recommending that this public hearing be tabled.
I've, I move that we approve staff recommendation and table item 7A1.
Motion by Kathy, second by, sorry, motion by Ward, second by Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Next is a public hearing to consider amending the code of the city of San Clemente to prohibit commercial mascots in the city of San Clemente.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight I bring before you a zoning amendment to prohibit the use of commercial mascots within the city. So, what are commercial mascots? Well, commercial mascots are either a person or animal that is dressed up in a costume or perhaps wearing colors that are closely associated with a business. Oftentimes mascots direct traffic to their, the business of operation, either by waving or pointing in the direction of the business. Currently, our code does not address commercial mascots, and they're not really consistent with our current city goals when it comes to signage. The reason why is because mascots can distract drivers, and also, too, mascots can cause sign clutter within our neighborhoods, so they focus attention away from our more traditional types of signage. Tonight, staff is recommending that city council take the recommendation of Planning Commission and adopt the ordinance attached.
Perfect. Thank you, Brent. If everybody's comfortable, is I just open the public hearing and hear what the public has to say?
I'll let you ask Brent.
Yeah, okay. Brent, what other kind of, what kind of other things are prohibited? What things are currently prohibited in our sign ordinance? Are we allowed to have people out? You know, sometimes you drive through cities and you see people, you know, waving signs, jumping up and down. Sometimes you see banners that, you know, inflate and deflate, and banners that flap, or, or any of those?
So currently, within our code, we prohibit several types of animated signage. Everything from pinwheels, to balloons, to pennant signs, flapping banners, those airmen that flap up and down, sign trawlers, those are all prohibited by our code. So this is just an area of code that wasn't being addressed, and so we're trying to make it reflect what our current standards are and what our already adopted sign law is.
And why didn't we just put this in that same code? Just make a little amendment to that? We just?
We did.
We did.
What we did was we amended the sign matrix and just included mascots as part of that, and then defined what mascots were. So it was a relatively minor change to the code.
Brent, I have a question, and I, this may not have a very clean answer, but how do we differentiate between a commercial mascot or a commercial sign usage between, say, a couple of Marines holding signs and trying to get you to go to their car wash, which is a little bit more of a nonprofit slash charity, one-time type use? How do you differentiate or carve out, how do you differentiate between the two uses?
Currently, our code doesn't differentiate between the two, so from a legal standpoint, there would be no differentiation. They would be treated the same.
Well, and this, this amendment's just addressing the, in public right-of-way, correct? Sidewalks, things of that nature?
Yes.
Yeah, so like the example I think you're thinking of, it's Walmart. Those guys hang out in the Walmart parking lot, which is private property. And this wouldn't address that, correct?
I guess the only, I guess the one that does come to mind is the high school. The last one that we had, the last time this cropped up is the high school would have these yard sales, mattress sale, what was that?
So, the, the one thing that this differentiates within, if you look at the definition, is talking about commercial.
Commercial, that's the... And that's what I wanted to ask you about.
So, these, what you're referring to are nonprofit things, things that are generating donations, that sort of stuff.
One-time type?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you tell me what happens currently if a business puts, say, an A-frame or any type of signage on the sidewalk of the public right-of-way?
Currently, that's prohibited, and we ask the, the owner of the business to remove it from the right-of-way.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we hear from public? All right, okay. Thanks, Brent. So we got a few cards on this. The first one is Vicky Wilson, then Brenda Yackey, and Tammy Dunn. I'm sorry if I got any of those names wrong. And just a reminder, it's three minutes per speaker, and we have a timer right in front of you, so it's easy to pay attention. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Wilson. I live in Laguna Beach, and I'm one of the owners of the Liberty Tax Service here in San Clemente. I hope all of you received and carefully read the letter we submitted outlining the issue of free speech contained within this ordinance. Let's take a look at excerpts from the definition of commercial mascot sign, using me as an example. Commercial mascot sign means a human, that's me, I assume, live, still me, dressed as, decorated as, functioning as a commercial message. Because I'm wearing this shirt with a Liberty Tax logo, I fit the definition. All types of businesses wear logoed apparel and uniforms. Are you going to cite everyone? Based on what I heard at the Planning Commission meeting and the new definition of sign, I am also in violation if I wear this shirt outside, as you just said, on the public right-of-way, because now I'm a sign. The definition continues, "That attracts the attention of motorists or pedestrians traveling in the public right-of-way. How am I to know or control if a motorist or a pedestrian notices me? If I see someone I know and I wave or call out to them, and other motorists or pedestrians notice me, then I'm in violation. This is absolutely absurd, and it's not enforceable. People notice people, it's human nature. Signs don't notice people, which is why a human isn't a sign." If I may read from the letter, "The plain meaning of the word 'sign' does not include people, even assuming that a person could reasonably infer that the term 'sign' encompass people. The question of which people are covered and which are not is left unanswered. The answer can only be determined by individual government agents such as yourselves and the code enforcement officers, but this is exactly the sort of delegation of discretionary enforcement powers that the Constitution prohibits. As an example, Mr. Panis affirmed one commissioner's supposition that a person dressed in a bad hairdo, not holding a sign, and employed by the business could stand in front of a barber shop and not be in violation of this ordinance as long as they were not directing traffic to the store. This scenario is the same tactic we employ. Our greeters smile and wave at passersby. Again, we do not direct traffic or hold signs, and our uniforms have no wording. The meeting went on to include scenarios where someone dressed in board shorts and a T-shirt would be in violation if they were standing in front of a surf shop. Confusion and ambiguity are rife in this ordinance. How is a reasonable person to know what is and is not allowed? The amended sign definition would make every off-site advertisement a violation. How can wrapped and logoed vehicles drive all over the city advertising their business, attracting attention, and just directing motorists and pedestrians to their business and not be in violation? The city cannot dictate how a person looks or who looks at that person. It is called discrimination. If you approve this ordinance as written, then you best order more citation books, hire more code-compliant staff to clear the streets, and get out the checkbook to pay attorneys for the flood of lawsuits you will be exposing the city to. This is not an ordinance or definition that can be evenly and consistently applied. We are ready to work with you on an alternate solution. Thank you."
Thanks, Brenda. Tammy, following Tammy will be Jerry.
My name is Brenda Yackey. I live in Laguna Beach, and I'm one of the owners of Liberty Tax Service in San Clemente. Given the time parameters, I would simply like to focus on one element that was part of the discussion held by the Planning Commission back in April, and that was the element of community standards as one of the reasons for this change. Certainly, city councils and planning commissions must make decisions about many things with an eye on community standards and goals. But what standards could those be in this case? Is it offensive to have a business project themselves as friendly and fun? To have someone smile and wave at people as they go past our location? To wave the American flag? I hope not. Our greeters don't disturb traffic or get in the way of pedestrians. We don't make misleading statements. We are lawfully conducting business. We see people smiling and waving in response. Over the past two years, we've had over 1,000 people come into our office to conduct business with us. Those people responded positively to our image as friendly and fun. And when we go out in these uniforms for the community events held downtown, people appear to enjoy seeing us and have fun with it. In fact, I have to share with you that several people came up to me at the car show this past Sunday and asked if we were fighting this proposed law. Their comments indicated that they felt the council was going too far with this. What could the problem be? Is it what we're wearing? Does it look funny? Is someone wearing an outfit that you don't think looks right or that you disapprove of the real problem? Several of the planning commissioners made comment about it as part of the discussion. They didn't feel we looked right, and it made them uncomfortable. But applying community standards as a justification to restrict some of our basic rights as Americans is an absolute overreach by government. Unfortunately, it's the argument made to enact laws about things that people are uncomfortable with. San Clemente used to have laws about who could or couldn't buy a home here based on the color of their skin or their ethnicity. I learned that when I read the title report of the very first piece of property I purchased, a duplex on Mariposa Street. Laws like that were written in the past to prevent people who looked different from being our neighbors. They were written in order to maintain a certain community standard, but they violated our basic rights as Americans. The people who made those laws felt very strongly about it and felt justified in defending it. But what was, what was it really about? It was simply that they were uncomfortable with diversity and change. They were uncomfortable with people who were different. Those are powerful emotions, but they result in those with power limiting the rights of others. That's a tendency to watch out for and avoid at all costs. When code-compliant officers visit our location in the first year of business, they made it clear that we were within the rules as long as we didn't hold a sign or wear anything that had lettering on it. They told us we were within our rights of free speech. Free speech. That was the official interpretation we were given, the official position of the city. First Amendment rights were the community standard in 2014 and the first half of 2015. It feels like that's about to change, and we're about to step back in time and use one group of people's discomfort with something as a justification to restrict the rights of others. That sounds unconstitutional to me.
Thank you. Tammy, and then following Tammy will be Jerry, and Sue, and then Lou.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to address a couple of issues, and I think my biggest concern is I'm still very confused at what brought the issue to table this year, what brought it here to begin with. We keep hearing things about concerns of distracted drivers and signs, and we asked the Planning Commission, when we were there, to give us examples or citations or just what is it about distracted drivers? And there were no samples or no examples, no criteria, nothing was given. In fact, when they asked specifically, was there an increase in traffic problems at our intersection? There was none. None given at all about distracted drivers because of our greeters. So for me, it's a non-issue about distracted drivers as a reason for this ordinance being brought forward, specifically in regards to us, because when you look at the Planning Commission, even the proposal that was given, this is directly impacting, directly to us at Liberty Tax Service. We take great offense and great concern over this in our business. You mentioned it was a minor change to the code, and I respect your comments, but it concerns me deeply, because a minor change to the code infringes on my freedom of speech greatly, and the city and the path that this goes down. Freedom of speech, there are five freedoms in the First Amendment. It's freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom of religion, freedom of assembly, and freedom to petition the government. All those freedoms are things that we fight for in this country, day in, over and over again, and freedom of speech is not a minor code change, not minor at all. The code as it is, is huge. We have to fight and struggle to make sure that we don't violate the code as it is. And what we do out there right now is simply, we have a person in a uniform. The same thing with the cow on Del Mar. That's a violation if this goes through. The lady who stands out of her store with candy samples, she's in violation now with this code. She will not be able to stand outside of her store and give candy samples on Sunday. That's a violation. This goes so far. Someone outside of a surf shop cannot stand there in board shorts and sandals, because that is a violation now. The slippery slope that this goes down opens up the biggest can of worms. When the Planning Commission asked the city attorney about those, does this violate free speech? He didn't answer them that yes or no, it does or doesn't. His answer was, "It hasn't been challenged to date in any other cities that has been erected." It blew my mind that no one caught that. It hasn't been challenged to date. It, it could be challenged, and it will be challenged. This is, 80% of our new business comes in because of that greeter. It's a liberty system. When we applied for our license to come into this city, it was known this is how we market. It's very important to us, and we're going to fight for our right to do our business and to survive. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tammy. Jerry, and Sue, then Lou. Tammy, Dunn.
Hi, my name is Jerry Beddick, and I work at Liberty Tax, and I'm not going to belabor all the points that have been passed, but if you, I would ask you to just drive down North El Camino Real, and we actually have a beautiful building there. A beautiful city tree is right in front of that building, and it pretty much blocks the view to the only legal signage that we're, would be able to have in our windows. There's awnings over the top of those windows. You're almost, when you're driving down the street, it's almost impossible to tell what the business is. At the Planning Commission meeting, it was brought up that we could work with the city to get additional signing. However, there is a sign agreement in place with the landlord of that property that prohibits any signs, additional signs to go up on that building. And there's also, right now, there are two signs that are already there that can't be changed, that belong to businesses that are no longer there, that because of this signage agreement, can't be changed. The other point that I'd like to make is that the people that we employ as greeters are probably not the people that could just go down and get any job. You know, there are people that we hire that are thankful for those jobs. They're not full-time, they're not meant to be a year-round employment job, but the people that have them are grateful to have them, and we are very grateful to have those people. I'd also point out that, you know, of our new clients that we have gotten over the past two years, 75% of those people, the reason that they came in was because of our greeters. And I don't think I've ever seen anybody out on the street that gave our greeter the finger or, or had anything negative to say about it. Most people, they look at our person out there waving the flag, and we get horn honks, and we get waves. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jerry. Sue, and then Lou is the last card.
Hi, my name is Sue Rucker. I have been a resident and homeowner in San Clemente since 1996, and as of this past tax season, I've also been an employee of Liberty Tax, and I'd also like to impress the point that Jerry brought up, that 80... And I'd also like to impress the point that Jerry brought up, that 80 to 85% of the people that come into our business, we, one of our first questions we ask those people is, how did you hear about Liberty Tax? They'll say, your greeter, we saw your greeter out there, and he's so fun, and we love seeing him on the street when we go by. And I feel that these ladies applied for a business license. It's a very lengthy process to get a business license in this city. They addressed the issue of their marketing plan when they got their business license. They were given that business license. Now they've been in business for a year and a half, and now you're yanking that marketing plan out from underneath them. I feel that's very unfair. Not because I work for Liberty Tax. As a citizen of San Clemente, I feel that that's a very bad message to send to prospective business owners coming into our city. To approve something and then after they have signed a lease and started business to say, oh, well, you can't do that anymore. I think that's a wrong message that San Clemente could send to the prospective business owners. And also, in talking to the people that come through our doors, they love seeing our waiver. They say it makes them smile when they drive down the street, when they see our waiver out there. And also, one additional point is, that waiver is only out there for three and a half to four months a year. This is not a full-time thing. It's only during tax season. It is not year-round. I do not think it sends a wrong message to the residents and visitors to San Clemente to have our waiver out there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sue. Lou, it's our last speaker card.
Yes, I'm Lou Avra. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Lou Avra. I've been involved in civic things here in the city and in the county over the last 10 years since I've lived here, or 15 years since I've lived here in San Clemente. I would like to suggest to the city council that you reconsider passing this ordinance or you think again about it. I don't look at this ordinance as something about advertising, and I notice also that the only folks here tonight speaking are the folks from the tax, and I'm not representing any organization. But I don't look at this sidewalk activity, the live activity, as an advertisement or signage. I looked at this as, from the perspective of a business owner trying to connect with their customers. I went, thought about it abstractly, and you know, when we, when we are at home in our homes and we're sitting back in the family room waiting for someone, the visitor to come, or someone comes to the front door, we're waiting for a visitor, we don't, when the doorbell rings, we don't sit back and just let them walk in. We go to the door, and frequently, if we can, we step out onto the porch or the threshold and shake hands and hug people and whatnot. And I think that's exactly what this is all about. It's the business owners trying to connect with their customers. And I think that's our family here in San Clemente, our business owners and our customers. And I think this is going to become super-important as we, as the outlet opens and we get more folks into town, and we're going to want to attract them. I know if I were a businessperson downtown, I wouldn't want to sit behind my glass door and wait for the folks to walk in. I would desperately want someone outside of my door, close to the, not blocking the sidewalk, but outside of the door, greeting customers or potential customers that walk by in a friendly way, at least looking at them and saying hello. So I look at this type of activity more in that vein than I do in signage and advertising, and would encourage you to think again before we pass an ordinance that tightens it down and just simply disallows that connection between the business folks and their customers. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou. And our last card is Connie Lacassi?
Yes.
Is that close?
Yeah, yes.
Perfect.
Thank you. First of all, my name is Connie Lacassi. I live in Laguna Beach. I am the person who sold the business. I'm the area developer for Orange County proudly, and I'm the person who sold the franchise to these people here. I'd like to tell you a little bit about these girls. They're wonderful professional women, extremely hardworking. One of them was a, I should read this so that I don't get carried away, but a vice principal at a very big high school. One of them is a businessperson and a real estate appraiser. And the third one is in business with a company that works on finding a cure for cancer for children. They are very devoted, hardworking people. When I sold them the San Clemente area, they were so excited because this is an area they're very familiar with, own some real estate here, and they knew that it was business-friendly. I'll tell you a little bit of the liberty philosophy. We are the ones that started the waivers. It was purposely picked that it was going to be the Statue of Liberty because we are a very patriotic company. And we found that with this way of advertising, that a lot of people really tell us how much they like it, that it's nice to have a smile and a waiver in the morning or on the way coming home. At first, it seems very unusual. We all said at first, we will never wear that costume, ever, 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 but it grows on you, and the people know about it. When I ask people in California, because we're fairly new to California, if they've ever heard of Liberty Tax, most of them will say, no. I say, we're the company with the waiver. And they say, oh, yes, I know you guys. I've seen you guys everywhere throughout the country. So we are trying to be friendly, a fun company, very patriotic, like I said. The girls, the three of them, have gone to just about every meeting they could possibly go to in San Clemente. They go to all of the ribbon-cutting ceremonies. They're at all of your special occasions. And they're just a joy, I would think, to have this kind of an entrepreneurial company. They help the people immensely. A lot of the money that they give, and we give $50 away when a person comes in and they have their taxes done with us, goes immediately into the community. We see the people going across the street and eating it right there or going to one of the stores across the street. So I ask you, it would be extremely detrimental to their business. We know 85% of our customers come from the waiver. We don't have millions of dollars like some of our competition has, but we've got a friendly, fun waiver who smiles at the people. The people tell us they like it. I feel that it's something you'd want in a thriving community. And to not have the waiver, I can tell you personally, would take away about 50, 60% of their business. And I would hate to see that happen when you've got hard-working entrepreneur people who love the community. So please consider and come to some conclusion that will help everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Kathy, would you like to start?
Can Scott address something first, our council? What about a person just with a logo on their shirt, standing in front of the shot?
Yeah, I'll just point you to the definition of commercial mascot sign. It's on page 7B-1. And it doesn't go to the subjective intent of the mascot or of the driver or viewer. It goes, the key part of the definition is a commercial message or advertising device that attracts the attention of motorists. And I really don't think a logo on a shirt would rise to the level of distraction that we would seek to enforce the ordinance under those circumstances.
Okay, thank you. I can go ahead and start. I asked for this item to be brought forward because I saw what was happening over in Palazada, and I was concerned about it because as a driver, I felt I was distracted by them. I found it very difficult to make right-hand turns with somebody going like this and waving into my face, trying to get my attention, trying to get me to wave back when I'm trying to steer the car. So I looked into what other cities had done. To me, you know, I don't want this to come under that we are not business-friendly because that's not the intent here. But we have very specific guidelines that say we do not have signs in the public right of way. So I think what we have to decide is whether this comes down to a sign or commercial advertising. As far as free speech, I don't think commercial advertising comes under free speech at all. I think the commercial component counteracts that. I also think, I have to think of the other people that have businesses around them, and this sign is walking around saying, look at me, and don't look at all the other signs behind me or across the street, look at my sign. And that's the definition of why we do not have signs in the public right of way, because it does create clutter and competes with other signage. But the most glaring thing on this is, I don't think distracted drivers is a non-issue. I think it is a very serious issue. And if you believe that this is distracting drivers, I think, you know, as far, I believe that, I think I have to vote to add this sign that it cannot be in the public right of way because it is a public safety issue. So I am, I'm going to support that. Also, I think the cow on Del Mar, and Brent, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's not in the public right of way. I think it's on their part. I don't believe it's in the public right of way, the cow for the seller.
Is the cow for the seller correct, is what you're referring to?
Right. It's not.
Yes, it's behind the linen stripe.
Their line. Okay. So things like that, I don't believe, I don't think the cars are an issue that are driving through town, but I think someone waving at me when I'm at a very busy intersection trying to get my attention is a distraction. And I do consider it a sign in the public right of way. And I think, to be fair to all the other business owners, we should not have that competition. That's what our code says, so I'm for adding this to our definition of signs.
Brent, can I put you in the hot seat for a second? To the best of your recollection, when did Liberty sign come for a business permit?
2013.
2013. And to the best of your recollection, was there a mascot discussed when they applied for their business permit?
Actually, in a letter that we received from Liberty Tax on 6/13, they indicate within that letter.
June 2013?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of 2015, this year.
Okay, so, three days ago.
Three days ago.
Okay.
We received the letter. Basically, in the communication, it says here, I can just read it, says, "As part of the process, we communicated with Sean Nicholas, associate planner, and have written email communications between August 23, 2013, and August 27, 2013, outlining our attentions with a photo attached showing the costume greeter looks like. Planning was made aware during this process. Mr. Nicholas' email reply indicated the missile code was not interpreted to allow our costume greeter under current requirements." So during that process in which they were applying for their permit, they were made aware that the greeter did not fit in with our sign code at the time.
And they modified it to fit? Is that the way I'm interpreting that?
No, no, they, I mean, under their, during their process, they were told the greeter would not be allowed.
Okay.
But they amended the greeter to remove any of the signage that was on it.
Gotcha, okay, that's.
Later on, when code enforcement came out to approach them regarding the greeter.
Okay.
And at that time, the city attorney advised us that our current code did not address mascots, so.
Okay. Yeah?
Brent, in the proposed ordinance, it starts out with, "The city has received numerous complaints from residents." How many have we received and what have been the nature of the complaints?
I would say we've probably received about five to 10 complaints regarding mascots and this type of activity.
And what were the nature of the complaints?
Exactly what it would be, someone's out waving at passerbyers, trying to direct traffic. There was some concern about manipulating traffic control devices, I believe, one of the complaints. So it was basically just the fact that it was there. And they didn't feel that it meant, or was, it didn't go along with what our sign code requirements are.
Are those on file somewhere, those complaints?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's for Brent.
No, I got a question for Scott, though.
Okay. Thanks, Brent.
Scott, does regulating commercial signage violate the Constitution of the United States?
No, that's a short answer, no.
Thank you.
You can't, yeah, you can't give preference to commercial signage over a non-commercial, but this treats, this is content neutral. All commercial signage that's conveyed this way is treated equally under this proposed ordinance.
Thank you.
I wanted to also ask a question. I'm not sure where we're going to go as we discuss this in terms of a pre-existing arrangement versus going forward as a city. But is there a place, anywhere in our system, where someone can have a permit for 30 days or 20 days for signage if they're doing a new grand opening or if they're announcing, you know, some, they've got some seasonal news where, in the case of the mascot, we could contain it to 30 days?
Are you asking Brent that, or you asking?
Well, yeah. Staff can be specific, but I think we're ordinary signs.
Do you understand what my question is?
Yeah, special event, grand openings, seasonal events.
Right, right. It's a special permit, it's contained.
To the extent that those allow signs, they would.
Let's just say 30 days from 10 to 4 during daylight hours, kind of a thing.
Yeah.
We do have some permits that are that way. For instance, banner permits, which we allow for 30 days at a time, four times a year. And A-frame signs, which we allow year-round, but they have to come in at night, have to be out of the public right of way. So there are some permits that we allow for this type, or temporary signage, I guess you could say, on a temporary basis.
So no matter where we go, if this, so we would also be amending our temporary signage definitions?
The temporary signage is actually specifically talked about within the code, and then it's defined what those things are, so this would not be listed under there.
So could this business then apply for a temporary signage permit for their mascots during the tax season?
No.
Because it's not, we're silent on it in the term?
It's not listed within there.
Okay, I'm going to be thinking about it, all right.
Tim?
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, well, I'm going to, I'm going to support this prohibition, too. I got to tell you, when I travel around the country, when I go to small towns, it's readily apparent which ones have sign codes that are strictly enforced and which ones don't. And I always prefer the ones that do have them strictly enforced, like we do in San Clemente. So I'm fully in support of this.
I would say one thing, that I would not be for giving them a special permit because I think it's a public safety issue anyway, so I'm not going to go on the side of, for four months, it's okay to do it, you know? One accident is too many for me.
Yeah, I mean, you can apply for a banner permit, just like any other business can.
So this is, you know, this is, this to me comes to a look and feel. See, I believe that this, I'm going to support this ordinance as well. And the reason is, I don't want to see businesses competing toe-to-toe on this element. The last thing I want is for every business in Long Island to roll out commercial mascots. You know, that's exactly what we don't want to achieve. I mean, most of our planning, most of our, our public safety, a lot of the enforcement actually take is primarily what the look and feel of our town is. What do people want to see when they wake up in the morning and drive down the street? How do they want to feel? Safety, appearance matters, you know, the concept of what a village is. And in that same vein is how we've really regulated this previously. And the reason this hasn't existed before is that no one really has pursued this course before. It really hasn't been that dramatic until this use, and I think it brought to realization that if there is an ever-escalating, you know, war of advertisement based on this type of commercial mascot, it's not the look and feel we want to achieve. And I, I'm really uncomfortable with the idea that comparing this freedom of speech with some of the more important and weighty matters of freedom of speech that have been defended for over the years, it doesn't even play in the same universe, frankly, with some of the constitutional rights that we enjoy. And, and so I'm, I'm going to support it. I don't feel, I don't feel that this is outside of our, outside of our purview, and frankly, it's something that fits very nicely with what we've done. You know, one of the reasons San Clemente enjoys commerce and real estate values and all the things we enjoy is because it's a nice place to live. It's a comfortable place to live, a place that feels great. And, and things like this that, you know, bring it down or that cause, you know, that are unsettling, we have to, you know, we have to step in and decide whether or not it belongs or doesn't belong. And, you know, in this community, at this place where we are, I don't feel it belongs.
I'm going to be supporting the recommendation this evening and entirely basing my view on this to do with the public safety issues and the traffic concerns because I think distracted driving is a serious and newly-evolving, or continually-evolving. distracted driving is a serious and newly evolving, or continually evolving issue here and basically all over the county. So, I'll be supporting it.
Ladies, thank you for coming out this evening. I'll share with you my, my thoughts before you leave here unhappy. I gotta say, I was, I was this close to seeing if we could find a solution that gave you guys some sort of interim, in the meantime, to find a new opportunity, new location, because I thought that your plea that you applied to staff with the idea that you were going to have a mascot made sense, until we discussed the fact that our existing policy was trying to limit those amount of commercial mascots that we have existing in town, and you modified it to get around that rule. It just doesn't, it doesn't fit so well with me. So, that being said, I'm going to support as, as it stands, and, you know, I, just so you don't see, feel singled out, because I know you're the only business here this evening. I know when I lived off Los Maras, we had a pizza place that had a pizza slice guy that would walk back and forth in the intersection, and we had the subway, $5 foot long guy, and both those gentlemen were very distracting, and I'm sure Liberty Tax is much more respectful and doesn't push the button to slow traffic, but that's exactly what was happening in the north end of town. And, so, as somebody who complained about those two other businesses, I see the concern that residents have, so I'm going to be in support of this as well.
All right, I move to introduce ordinance number 1599, entitled, "The City Council, City of San Clemente, California, adopting only amendment 15-086 for the purposes prohibiting commercial mascot signage, signs."
I'll second that. Motion by Brown, second by Hamm. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
I move that we table the public hearing for San O Tires Fence, item C.
I do have an update on that.
Oh.
The staff just recently received a letter from the applicant withdrawing that project.
Okay.
Okay.
So, do we need, no action taken?
We don't table?
We don't even table it?
Nothing.
Because no longer an item.
They withdrew it.
Yeah, so, there you go.
I just found out.
Yeah, what we'll do is work with staff to formalize an agreement with them that that application has no effect anymore.
Okay, next is a public hearing to consider amending the recreation sports partnership policy to add a third recreation sports partnership level and associated fees, and assign names to the various partnership levels.
Do we have any speaker cards on this joint?
No.
Okay. Hi Pam.
Hello.
Want to give us a quick rundown?
This is going to be fast, yes. At the May 19th City Council meeting, City Council approved the recreation sports partnership fees and levels, and it was asked of us to add a third level of partnerships. We have done so, and on page two of your report, there are the different levels of partnerships. We are recommending to change the names, because we could not find a creative way to call between senior and junior partnerships, and if anybody here has the great idea, let me know at this point, but we have suggested changing it to gold, silver, and bronze. So, it's almost like the Olympics. Gold would be taking the place of senior partnership, bronze will be taking the place of junior partnership, and then silver would be that in-between partnership level. And, then, in addition to adding that level, so we are asking to change, to adopt the fees, which is associated with the third level, as well as changing the partnership policy, which is the new verbiage of the new levels, as well as the amenities, the discounts, and how those would be applied.
Okay.
And with that, we're recommending approval of both.
I'll open and close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I don't have a question, but I would like to comment on the, how your changes help a series of programs that are not revenue neutral, so I appreciate the effort during the times when we're trying to get the budget sorted out.
Thank you.
I have one question for you Pam. In, in the fiscal impact part, you say the city, you call out the number that the city subsidizes. I'm glad you, very glad you put in there. This is a very large subsidy that the taxpayers of San Clemente put in, even if they don't use the sports park. So, I'm glad you pointed that out. You say an increase in revenue, and I, I'm not looking for any hard numbers, but give me an idea. Is it $5,000, $50,000, $200,000?
I would love to give you a number. I can't even give that to you, because right now, we are in the process of receiving applications for the recreation sports partnerships, and so, we don't know what our recommendations are going to be, but we do foresee that it's going to be an increase, because the levels of, the percentages off are less than what they were previously, and so, we do anticipate that we'll get more, more money, more revenue. I shouldn't just say money.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pam, I like the clarity of this. I remember, it was Bob and I, who was it that, that we wrangled over this thing for, was it, it was so painful, just trying to, you remember that? It was, it was terrible. It was just, it was a terrible process, and I'm, this, I can, I can see some, some light at the end of the tunnel here. One thing I wanted to ask is, very similar to, perhaps, more of a, I guess airlines use it, hotels use it, I don't know how, how common it is in recreation programming, but what about flexible rate schedules based on demand and seasonality? For example, I look at the meeting room at Tierra Grande Park at $100 an hour, or some of the aquatic field rentals, you know, there may be an increased demand during certain times. A lot of the time, you know, when there's less demand, people may not be willing to pay as much, and you may be able to improve subscription by lowering, you know, to having that programming done automatically for you. I'm just curious about, is, is, is that common in, in parks and recreation management, or is there any software that may be possible that would have these amenities and, and be able to flex and schedule online? Give me an idea. I'm just, I'm just curious about, you know, if we, for example, have all of these fields that aren't used in the summer, in the sports park particularly, the pool isn't used during the winter at all, because, for whatever reason, do we lower the rates during that time, because it's not being subscribed to try and prove, you know, get more people renting it? Could you speak about that?
I sure can. Our beach club, we actually do that. We have different rates in the winter than we do in the summer, so we actually already have that type of structure. It is the only area that we do that. Other cities do not usually have that seasonal type of thing on their fields and their pools. It's something that we can look into, definitely. We do have, as far as swim meets and things like that, we have our high impact to our public as to low impact, so we have made it peak versus non-peak, but we haven't actually done anything where it's, you know, 10% off during the day, during the week, during the school year, which we really don't have as much action going on and reservations. So, I think it's something we can definitely look at.
I think it's all found money at that point, right? I mean, subscription versus non-use is, is there's a certain break-even point, and then anything's gravy after that. And then, anything that gets beyond that public programming, people could use it, you know, positive benefits to the community. I'd be interested to see, and it's a little out of the box, a little far down the road, about if we could do some, I mean, similarly, we have a lucidity, you know, in a maintenance system, or, you know, if there's some online, on software, we could plug in all of these different facility rentals and have it provide flex pricing, so if somebody wants to rent it during the middle of the year in the school year, they could get it for, you know, 70% off and be able to benefit from that. I just want a, you know, efficient utilization of these resources. You know, I look at these, each of these is a resource that we have, and being able to efficiently utilize them is something. One other question I had, something important to me. One other question I had for you is, you know, when you provide these discounts to our recreation, to our partners in, in running, you know, tournaments, meets, and competitions, how does that work? When someone wants to run a larger program or tournament, they want to come in and rent the pool, you know, the hall, the pool's decked for $500 an hour, but they run through, if they run it through a local partner, they could do it for half the cost, and then the partnership, you know, the city gets half the money in that regard with the same event. How do you prevent that from happening, so that, I guess, they're running it through locals to try and, and reduce costs?
They have to fill out a special event application, or, we, we find out all the details, and anytime that this has happened, we have found out. So, it's not really in their best interest to do that, because the partner has, has a lot bigger at stake to lose. They could lose their partnership if they do something like that. It's called subletting, and-
That's exactly what it is. That's kind of like a lease sublet.
It is strictly prohibited.
Oh, it is?
Correct.
Okay.
They all know it, so they don't do it, and anytime we hear a hint of it, and we have our ear to the ground, and we warn them, you can't do this.
You don't use your privileges and your discounted rates to be able to make money off of it, right?
Correct.
You run a tournament?
Correct. When I first started, they, some of our user groups were, were giving their time to other groups, and we let them know, that's, that's not okay. What you're actually doing is you're stealing from the city.
Right.
Because we've given you this time, you giving it to another group is not being gracious of you. This is actually taking from the city, and we've given you this discount, and we won't continue to give you this discount if you continue to abuse it.
So, the same thing would apply to, to any tournaments or anything they train?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's it. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
And then, as far as the, the software, we actually are going to be, this year, we're looking at an RFP for having a new software system, so that there might be that ability in a new software system. The system we currently have, it's an additional expense, and we're not quite confident in how we would be able to book things online, because we could do it, we could do it right now, but we're not as happy with how that might go, so we're going to be exploring that. So, it, to be continued.
I just want to ask that, can we change, can we delete bronze and put in platinum? I just feel like bronze is platinum. Platinum's much better than bronze, right?
Would you like to make it then?
I'll, I'll let you decide.
Platinum, gold, silver?
Yeah.
Gold, silver, gold, platinum.
Yeah, see, that's the way I'd like to see it, yeah. Can we do that? Anybody have an issue with that?
Hi.
Sure.
No, this is the Olympics, man. A bronze medal in the Olympics, come on!
We don't hand out bronze medals anymore.
We don't hand out platinum medals in the Olympics.
Well, this is better than the Olympics. We're better than the Olympics here in San Clemente.
Aw, you're killing me, Hamm.
Platinum.
Platinum what, what?
Yes.
I have to admit, that isn't as clear.
I got support from two other people.
Well, it isn't as clear. Like, if you say, oh, you're platinum, is that better than, is it gold?
That's the point, because nobody wants to be the bronze membership, just like last time, no one would be the junior. No one wants to be the junior or the bronze. They want to be silver, gold, or platinum.
A bronze medal at the Olympics is pretty cool.
It's like records, man.
I wouldn't turn one down. If they wanted to give me one, you know.
So, how many do we have for platinum?
Platinum.
I'm just fine with gold, silver, bronze.
I'm okay. I'm all right with it.
With platinum? Woo, that's three. There we go.
So, I move that we adopt resolution-
No one wants bronze.
15-31, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, revising the policies and fees governing the rental of the fields," and "Amending Resolution Number 15-26," and that we approve the amended recreation sports partnership with the change that the categories will be silver, gold, and platinum.
I'll second that. Motion by Doncheck, second by Hamm. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Can I just vote against the platinum part of it?
No, you can't.
Can we use my favorite?
Make a substitute motion, please.
The motion is entirely-
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
All those in favor?
I'm not recognizing, calling for a brown substitute motion at this point. We will bury you!
I'm exercising my powers as a mayor to run this meeting, and I'm not recognizing. This would be controversial, Fred, put this in the history register.
We will bury you!
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's a motion by Doncheck, second by Hamm. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
None opposed.
Pam, thank you for a great report, and as always, very detailed.
I have always wanted to pull a Brezhnev, though, you know, pull the shoe off and start pounding the desk, you know. It's a Cold War thing. Nobody under the age of 25 would do it.
Can I just, and I wanted to bifurcate. I was, I love bifurcate, you know, yeah.
Can we bifurcate that motion?
Tim, how do you remember when those songs came out in 65, when you were a kid, by the way?
Yeah, you weren't around in 65.
How do you recall those songs coming out in 65, when you were a kid? Explain to me that one.
Oh, my parents loved old music.
Was that a past life?
They didn't listen to anything in the decade. My parents moved one decade behind. We're in Arizona. We get everything a decade behind there.
Oh, okay, okay. That makes sense. Now, I get it, okay.
Yeah, I heard Beach Boys in 85 for the first time, for crying out loud. I'm kidding. I kid.
Okay. Bob, thanks for pointing out the 1.2, 1.3 million dollars, by the way. That was a good point.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Report from the Community Development Director concerning the possibility of amending the city's subordination agreement with Cotton's Point Senior Housing to pursue, to pursue permanent financing with the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gregg? Okay.
I do.
Well, I think we all read the staff report. Amber, are you going to pull that?
Yeah, no presentation.
Okay, well, I wanted to talk about how important this project is to our city being an affordable community, and so, I understand this is just a financial change that we're moving, you know, from the primary to the subordinate position, but I wanted my colleagues to know that, at the time, Bob was there, I think Tim was there, too, the move from making this strictly retirement housing to making it affordable retirement housing was a real important decision by the city council, and so, I just want your assurance, Amber, that that is not changing, even though Wells Fargo is not holding the notes anymore?
Yes, that's correct. That, you know, this was to make sure that it would stay affordable for the 55-year term, and although HCD had said we need to subordinate in reviewing their document, we found that it was equal to ours, and that was really the goal of the city, is to make sure that those affordability levels were retained.
Okay, so, they are. And then, would you be able to give us an idea when we're going to be seeing the RFP for the housing element?
July 7th, actually.
Very nice, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Amber? No?
I'd like to hear what Mr. Sewell's got to say about this. He made all this, this drive down here from Los Angeles. Tim, would you mind?
I'll follow you, your son.
Oh, okay, thank you. Would you mind sharing a little bit of, of your perspective on this, and-
He just came to see the commercial mascots, so, sorry. Sorry about that.
I almost didn't make it.
Yeah.
I'm Tim Sewell, I'm with Meta Housing Corporation. I was the project manager for the Cotton's Point project, and the matter before you is about the state's requirement that any financing they put into a project, they take a senior position as far as the regulatory requirements for the project are concerned. History, before we closed the construction loan, we thought we'd come to a suitable agreement in which the city's regulatory agreement would be senior to that of even the construction lender, Wells Fargo. Unfortunately, now that we're at the point where we're converting to permanent financing, and the state's money's coming in, they're saying, "Well, we can't bend from our regulations." And, we went down the path of trying to convince them, "Well, the city's regulatory requirements are very similar to yours," but at the end of the day, they said, "Well, if you want our money, you've got to play our game." So, ultimately, that's what's kind of happened here. And, I also want to put councilperson, Doncheck, at ease, that even though CCRC, the California Community Reinvestment Corporation, is taking the permanent position in the tax exempt bonds, they're funded by Wells Fargo, Bank of America, et cetera. All those banks don't like to take a long-term position in affordable housing and real estate, so they pool their funds into a consortium, and CCRC is that consortium, so, they're still on the deal, but just not, not the lead.
And, on an everyday basis, it looks like it's a very successful housing situation. Is that true? Do you have a waitlist?
It is. We do have a waitlist. I can't enumerate the waitlists, but usually, projects of that type have waitlists of over, well over 100 people.
It just seems like it's always been here. Congratulations.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for your continued support.
You know, on that note, I got to tell you, the, the, it does seem like it's always been there. It just, you drive by and it just doesn't, it seems like it's always been there, and, and I, I think I shared this, but I went to the grand opening, and one of the residents invited me up to his room. His sister was living with him, and they were, I don't know, my age, and he told me how this project saved his life. He was desperate, very bad places, and finding a place there saved his life. I mean, it was really quite touching. So, I think the project came out great, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Meta.
Lori wants to. Lori's going to.
I'll read it. Before I read it, also, where did Amber go? Oh, could you give us a quick update on when they're going to start taking names for the Sarah Housing Project? I've had three people ask recently.
I don't know, but I can follow up with Denise Abreu.
And let us all know?
Exactly.
That'd be great, okay. So, I move that we recommend, that we approve staff recommendation to adopting Resolution Number 15-32, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, approving a subordination agreement and a stoppable certificate with SC Senior Apartments LP and the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and a First Amendment to Subordination Agreement with SC Senior Apartments LP, US Bank National Association, California Community Reinvestment Corporation, in connection with the permanent financing for the 76-unit Cotton's Point Affordable Housing Development. And, we also need to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the subordination agreement and a stoppable certificate, the First Amendment to Subordination Agreement for the permanent loan documents, and any other documents necessary for permanent financing.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Baker. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Next is a report from the Assistant City Manager concerning adoption of the fiscal year 2016 city budget.
Good evening, Mayor Hamm and council members. I'm Judy Vincent, Finance Manager.
Where is this at?
I know, right? The item in front of you tonight is adoption of our fiscal year 2016 budget for the period July 1/15 through June 30 of 2016. Over the last six weeks, we've had several discussions and meetings regarding the budget. Council direction that was given during those times has been incorporated into the item that you see before you. What's being presented, a total budget, total all funds of $125,142,840,000. one forty-two, eight hundred and forty thousand, or eight hundred and forty dollars in revenue, and total expenditures of one hundred and thirty-three million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand and ten dollars. For the general fund, the part of those numbers that is a general fund is a total revenue budget of fifty-five million, six ninety-seven, eight hundred and forty dollars, and total expenditures of fifty-eight million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. I want to reiterate that we do have a balanced budget that's being presented to you, and what that means is our operating expenditures for the general fund do not exceed our operating revenues. We actually have a positive operating position of about two hundred and twenty thousand that's being presented to you. Also tonight included in the report is a resolution that is to approve a revised salary schedule based on the MOU with the San Clemente City Employees Association, and there's also some changes to personnel in that resolution based on what's in the budget as well as the classification and compensation study that was approved by you in April of this year. So with that, I would like to answer questions, but I think Eric has a couple comments as well.
Thank you, Judy. Really quick, mayors, members of the city council, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Recently, in a local publication, there was an article on the budget. We've received a few calls, and I know the city managers received a few inquiries, and a couple of things I just wanted to clarify tonight. I'm going to continue to present the message at the quarterly reports as well as the mid-year notifying the council of decisions that we're making today that could affect the future operating position. While we do forecast in future years, year five and six outline potential negative deficits, we're never going to allow ourselves to go into a negative deficit. What that would mean is we'll do less projects, or we'll do other things to bring our operating position to a positive like we've always done in previous years. So I just wanted to make that message clear so that there was no misinformation out there in terms of not having a, or having a problem. We won't allow a problem to happen, and we'll always warn the council in a preliminary manner of any potential problems that could happen. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that.
Any questions for staff? Okay.
I started with this, and I'm going to end with this, which is the reserve analysis. I had a reason to read in the last week that GFOA article that was done last year where Bill Humphries and Paul Gigerison explained how they computed the depreciation confidence for the peer, and, you know, if you had ninety-five percent confidence that it was going to be okay, you saved this much money. If you had seventy percent that it was going to be okay, you saved a different amount. And it was really good quality thinking, and so I wanted to circle back to Bill Humphries on that. But when I look at all the hard, good work that's been done this year, I really do believe there's an opportunity to be proactive in terms of how we set our reserves, and I'm looking forward to that at this time next year. And so if we have to have a, I don't know if there's shared agreement with this on the council, but we have a lot of reserves. We have, you know, even just in this report, you've got a depreciation reserve for water, you've got a depreciation reserve for sewer, one for the storm drain, one for golf, one for clean ocean, we've got our contingency reserves, and it would be nice to have somebody look at it and help us better understand what our appetite for risk is when it comes to holding money to protect the things that make San Clemente so great. So, I don't know if there's support for that among my colleagues.
I guess I don't understand the ask. What's the ask again?
At this time next year, when we go through the financial planning, I'd like to have the assurance that we've done a reserve analysis and that we're really being intelligent in terms of that component of the budget.
Well, and...
And I'm happy to share the GFOA article, if anybody missed it last year, that talks about the probability analysis that went into protecting the peer and what it means financially. It's kind of cool.
Lori, to that point, we've, that's the second time we've asked for that since I've been on council, so I think there is support for that, as always.
So, this time next year, we'll have, and if we need to hire somebody to do that, or...
Well, a couple of points. Your point is understood and message is received. We will be coming back to council throughout the budget year next year with the La Potas project, whether it's a sale or a lease, and those proceeds, how do we deal with them in the reserve? And as I indicated at the LTFP and budget process, we're going to be looking at reevaluating all of our reserves, because I kind of used the example of we have a sustainability reserve of ten million. However, we have an emergency reserve that's set at nine percent of our operating budget. Well, GFOA standards say sixteen percent. However, we say we're good because we've got ten million in sustainability. So one of the points might be, well, why don't we just have one emergency reserve that's sixteen percent? And so we definitely will be looking at that. One of the things I have to caution is, we have to be careful because it might say we need to fund twenty million dollars for the peer over the next ten years. I don't know if we'll have the money to do that, and so those are concerns that we'll take into consideration at the LTFP process. We utilize the GFOA standards to make sure our reserves are aligned. We can definitely look at a consultant. We did engage GFOA for that reserve study, but it didn't really yield the results that we had anticipated, and so that's something that we can definitely go back and look and see if there's other opportunities. But I agree, our reserves need to be looked at and possibly redistributed, as well as our facility improvement funds, which we know are underfunded with the demands that we have out in the community parks and facility infrastructures. So, point well taken. We'll work on that throughout the year and definitely bring some type of guidance back through the LTFP process.
And I'm here to say, if you think by doing this analysis, we're going to be kind of sticker shocked, then let's do that analysis, because pretending it's not there would not be good financial stewardship. So, if you think it's going to be a rude awakening, this is the time to do it while the economy is steady. And we've talked about the playgrounds, you know, we've got the best park system in, arguably, in Orange County, but we don't have a plan for keeping it great.
Absolutely, and I have no qualms of presenting that sticker shock to you because in the facility improvement fund, we know we're underfunded. I mean, that's already something we know based on our current formulas that are in place. So that's something that we can definitely bring back to the council.
And just one, just one more comment about that. I think that the direction that we gave was talking about the sustainability reserve and the general fund, and the general fund emergency reserve. We didn't, we didn't really delve into the depths of this, the water, sewer, storm drain, solid waste, and golf, and I think frankly, those are, maybe that's, maybe we ought to start with sustainability and emergency and see where that takes us, and then, you know, if we've got to delve into these things, we'll get to that with the understanding we gain from talking about sustainability and emergency, and that'll give us some basis for taking a look at these funds. But to hire a consultant to take, to take this bite before we decide on the big numbers, then I think we're, maybe we ought to decide on the big numbers first before we get to these, also big numbers, but just not quite as big.
And I would say, let's let them figure it out, because what I was thinking with these reserves is maybe they're overfunded, because if you're assuming ninety-nine percent, you only will accept risk at the ninety-nine percent level, and maybe ninety-five percent is a more reasonable level, that might free up, I'm being ideal, I know, it's probably the other way around, but you hear the message.
Your point is taken, very clear.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No? Entend a motion?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I move we adopt resolution number fifteen thirty-three entitled Resolution, City Council, City of San Clemente, California adopting and approving the budget at the fund level for the City of San Clemente for the 2016 fiscal year and the commitment of fund balance, and to adopt resolution fifteen dash thirty-four entitled Resolution, City Council, City of San Clemente, California adopting revised salary schedule and new classifications and amending resolution number fifteen ten and any other resolutions in conflict therewith.
Second, motion by Brown, second by Hamm, alls in favor? Aye. Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you, Judy, thank you, Eric. Judy, your hair looks very nice this evening.
Thank you, Chris.
And the brain, the brain power that went into this budget is phenomenal, so thank you both. Thank you all three.
Eric, your hair looks terrible.
James, don't be jealous, Judy's hair looks beautiful this evening.
Just want to throw that out there.
Really?
Did we get that on the record, Joanne?
She looks like she's got a haircut.
Every word.
That's good. Do I get a second on that motion?
I'll second it. Wait.
I'll gain control back. Here we go. Item C, Police Services Contract.
Me again.
Oh, there we go.
Yes. So, the Police Services Contract for fiscal year 2016 is before you to have council accept the contract. The total amount is twelve million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. In the budget that you just adopted, we have funding allowed to cover that, most of it in the general fund, and then a hundred thousand of the budget is in our special revenue funds for our cops grant that you also accepted this evening. The contract amount is about two point six percent over the contract amount from the prior year, and this is due to a multitude of items going up and items going down, but the biggest change is the defunding of two positions that are currently vacant. One is a motorcycle deputy and one is a crime prevention specialist, so those items were defunded. And so with that, I will answer any questions. We've talked about this budget prior, but if you have any questions on the item, yes?
You know, we talked about a budget placeholder to either revisit our decision regarding one of the patrol positions mid-year. Is that reflected in this budget, or how are we addressing that?
There is no dollar amount reflected in the budget, but in the contract itself, there is an item that allows for those two defunded positions to be brought back if council so chooses throughout the year.
And is it on the schedule?
But we would have to fund those positions if that were the case.
And the direction from council was that come February next year, we're going to readdress this concern, correct?
Well, it was going to be sooner than that, I thought.
It was going to be sooner because we were going to look at what happened at Christmas with the outlet mall and all of that, and I thought it was going to be January.
I believe January was what council had.
Beginning of next calendar year.
Beginning of next year, we're going to just see how things are going.
See how things went, and see how the traffic is.
And frankly, I think that while we're in a really tumultuous time, I think we ought to look on it as a quarterly basis, not necessarily in the public sense, but at least reports from Dave, you know, visuals from James, and just to be able to monitor that, you know.
It will be a pretty basic discussion on the financial standing of the outlet center at that time, because we won't have the actual sales tax receipts from the, from the outlet mall at that time, because sales tax receipts are about six months behind actual, you know, receiving of them, you know, spending of the money at the mall. So we'll be behind, but we'll try to have some conversation with the management of the mall to find out how it did over the Christmas season.
I think probably the discussion will be more centered, not necessarily on the revenue, but on what draw it has upon police resources. If, you know, our calls went up significantly, if we find that we have an officer there a great deal of time during the nights, during the weekends, then that would be more of the data that would be driving that decision in my mind, although I think the revenues will help to be able to put that in a nice place. At that point, I'd like to make sure that we're not having any drop in service levels or that, you know, we're not stretched too much. So, that would be part of the, you know, the information I'll be looking for.
I have a question, maybe, for Lieutenant Moody. So, we're ending June right now, so when will we get the second quarter police activity report, that multiple-page document that shows us month-by-month activity by crime type versus year ago? If it wraps up in June, is it real-time data?
I was just told today that I'll have that number for you tomorrow, so you should have that data for you.
Well, no, because June's not over yet.
Well, this last quarter, this first quarter of the year.
Oh, for first quarter, January, February, March?
Right, right.
Oh, great, and it'll be the standard quarterly.
And then we'll keep it going from there, correct?
Great, fantastic. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm still waiting for the report about police radios. Where are we on that?
Eric, I think Eric has an update on that, don't you?
So, yes, we worked with the Orange County Sheriff's Department Lieutenant Moody, and he has provided us with numbers of a reduction of radios overall, so we'll be coming back to council with a memo that shows what the inventory was and then the reductions that Lieutenant Moody is recommending. And so I want to say somewhere upwards of about eight to nine radios are being reduced from the current portfolio that they have of an inventory of radios.
Okay, and the plan, how we're going to implement that?
Correct.
Just for, just for info.
Correct, and we'll reiterate the plan with the eight hundred megahertz.
Thank you. That's all. Easy question, see, John? Okay.
Any questions for staff? Before I entertain a motion, I'm just going to say I'm going to support this contract this year, but I'm not going to support a third year of cuts in staffing levels to the sheriff's contract next year, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we authorize and approve and authorize the mayor to execute contract C fifteen dash forty-six between the City of San Clemente and the county boards providing for police services for the 2016 fiscal year.
Motion by Brown, second by Doncheck, Ward, Baker, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Oral Communications Part Two, I don't have any cards. City Manager?
Nothing to report.
City Attorney?
Nothing further than that, thank you.
Council Members?
Lori? Tim?
Yeah, I have a couple items. First of all, it was Nikita Khrushchev who said, "We will bury you," not Brezhnev. I got that wrong. I can't believe it. My Cold War history is behind, you know. But it happened in sixty, not sixty-five, so I'm behind even there, you know, that was before I was even born. Yeah, it was in black and white, that's right. A few things. This last weekend, I had the opportunity to attend an appreciation dinner on Camp Pendleton. The First Marine Division hosted all of the cities who had adopted units in the, in the, on Camp Pendleton, and the City of San Clemente has currently adopted, we've adopted the two four, we've done that. I think it's been almost two decades now that we've had that adoption in place. It's really one of the great things I think we do as a city, you know, drawing, you know, supporting and providing support for them. So was able to attend. We saw some, some real-life scenarios. They had their trainer there down where the tomato fields are. They have a combat trainer down there, and it's the villages, and they do these, they had an ID scenario, and they had a patrol attack scenario, and you got a real feel for, I mean, I love watching professionals work, and that's what these guys were. They were true professionals. And then afterwards, we attended a dinner, and Wayne Eggleston was there from the Heritage, the Hogans were there, Jim and Carla, and for all the good work that they do, as well as Pam Passow from Beaches Parks and Recreation, and they, you know, they handed out these really nice, these really nice memorabilia, "No better friend, no worse enemy," and I thought that that was a great thing presented by the Commandant General, First Marine Division. And so, it was very cool, yeah, and so it was just, it was a wonderful evening. It was, I'll tell you, the most gratifying part of the evening was seeing, I was one of, maybe a couple hundred people were there. There were so many cities and so many groups that had gotten together to adopt, all of the units were basically adopted. I mean, reconnaissance battalions, tank battalions, it was great to see how many people loved and supported the troops. And I was just really gratified. We had three World War II veterans there who stood up, and Korean War veterans, and it was a really amazing night. I'm just grateful that the city has, and this council, has supported the adopted unit and that our residents embrace them, and for all the good work that goes on from the Hogans, from Wayne, and from the city. So, just wanted to share that, that was great. And then I also had a chance to attend the choir concert for the, I have a daughter in choir, and so I have a vested interest, and it's nice to know we have so many talented kids. It feels like half the school gets up there to sing when they have these choir concerts. Yeah, so cool. Oh, yeah, you're passing that around. And that's it.
Well, Tim, we've all attended many of those Marine Corps events, and I got to tell you, one thing that I consistently hear from whoever's, whoever's speaking for the Marine Corps down there is how thankful they are that they're close to the City of San Clemente and that the citizens of San Clemente support their efforts. So, that's a constant theme, and I, and the citizens, we all really appreciate that. It's very nice of them to say. I also attended a Triton event. The, Melpusquale was inducted into the Triton Hall of Fame. That's Coach Ortiz. Just click through a few pictures there. Very nice golf tournament. There's John Hammer, there's Mel. The very nice tournament out at Tolega Golf Course, nice day, and myself and three partners had this really nice trophy. There's, they presented Mel with a leather jacket. But myself and three of my compadres picked up what's called the, let's see, 2015, oh, upside down here, Triton Football Hall of Fame Tournament, first place, 2015. We played great, it was really fun.
They gave those away to everyone who participated, didn't they?
No, they did not.
It's like one of those soccer trophies my daughters get all the time.
Is that a bronze participation trophy?
That is a bronze participation award. May I just say one other thing? We have been, the two fours have been all served by Lieutenant Colonel We have been, the 2-4 has been well-served by Lieutenant Colonel Mike Wolonsky, and he has been a tremendous advocate and a great presence here in the city. He is moving. He is going out to Connecticut, I believe, is his destination, and that's going to take place the 1st of July. So we want to wish him and his wife well, and we thank him for his service and for his command of the 2-4. He's great, and we love him, and we want to wish him well.
I got some questions about the OCTA, though. I want to build on that a little bit. And I do, it interests me. I read something in the-
As a practical matter, though, if you email me in advance, I can give you real answers rather than, you know, off the cuff. So let's hear what you've got, and I'll see what I can do.
Okay. Well, what I've got is, we passed a resolution in opposition to toll roads. The Orange County Transit Authority voted in favor of tolls on the 405, and you then told us you voted?
Three times no.
Three times no.
Yes.
Well, how about the time when they voted in favor of the road? I didn't see your no vote there. I saw that as a aye vote.
That's correct.
So you voted three times no, and then one time aye?
Yes. Now, what, where are you going with this?
I'm just wondering. I thought you were, you know, you gave me, you gave this council the impression that you were opposed to that toll on the 405, but you voted in favor of it.
Yes, and I think I've now twice given, I'll bring my prepared remarks again, but I've given you explanations twice as to why that is. But the long story short is that Caltrans came forward with upwards of $80 million and said, "We are doing the toll roads in Orange County, toll lanes, not toll roads, toll lanes, with or without you, OCTA." So then, so up until then, I had voted no, all right? And so then the conversation shifted to local control as the conversation. And in a story about local control, if it's Sacramento versus Orange County, I'm going to vote with Orange County every day of the week. And so that was that vote, because Caltrans was going to come in, and they were going to do the toll lanes. It's their roads, with or without Orange County, and so the majority of us chose local control as the solution. So if I misrepresented that in the last conversation, I'm very sure I was clear about it in the earlier two conversations. So...
Well, when you said you voted against it three times-
I did vote against it three times. Would you like to see my record?
Well, we, I took that to mean that you voted against it continually. I didn't know there were more than three votes.
Yeah.
Well, it would have been nice then to hear-
Again?
-that you had voted in favor of it.
Do you understand about the $83 million being the game changer that happened earlier this year?
I understand about $83 million. I also understand about us losing our carpool lane to tolls.
We can talk about the tolling policy at another time if you're interested in that. Tolls are a terrible thing, but if it's a choice between Sacramento or Orange County, I will go with my county every day of the week.
So tolls are okay?
Mayor, before we, we have kind of brief comments about meetings attended and comments, but if you wanted to schedule a longer dialogue about this, I'd suggest you-
I'd like more detail about what's to expect coming down the road. If this is, is this a final decision? Is this something that's done, fait accompli?
Yeah, it is, and I'm happy to have it agendized for a meeting in July and give you the timetable. And I think I included it in the, I'm pretty sure I included it in the handout I shared with all of you at the last meeting. It was one of the pieces of paper that I handed out. So it's going to be a very challenging year in Orange County next year, and this 405 toll lane issue is going to be, A, the biggest freeway project that has been done, B, it's a design-build project, which is thanks to some new legislation, and C, making sure that the tolls collected stay in our county and benefit our residents is the challenge.
I'd like it agendized. I mean, we passed an ordinance about this, I believe, that spoke specifically to this item, didn't we?
Yeah, and actually-
A resolution.
I think I, and I'm pretty sure on this, too. It was, it needed to have been last summer, and even then, it's the corridor cities, which the northern corridor cities, that are concerned, and every effort's being made to address their concerns. So, and again, I will say, which I said at the last meeting, if you've really got a concern about toll lanes, we should be looking south, because San Diego is running, they have a master permit approved by the Coastal Commission to run a toll lane all the way up to our border by the year 2045.
Well, I'm concerned as a citizen to vote in favor of Measure M2 that talks about infrastructure projects and then have government take that toll lane away. That's what I'm concerned about. And that's what I, that's what I hate about this whole thing.
Okay, so we're going to agendize that for future discussion. Okay? Kathy?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
A couple things. Scott, I'm going to put you on the spot about water rates in a second, just to prepare you. James, one of the things that I was talking, that came to mind when Mr. Revesendorf was here about turf removal that came up today was, are we looking at the driving range of the golf course, removing the turf there? Because that seems like a rather large area of turf, and doesn't seem like it's in recycled water. That's a good point, I think about that. Thanks for that. And then, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay. And then water rates, I've been getting a lot of questions about water rates. If you could just reiterate for the public, how are tiered structure different, is different than San Juan's structure that caused some illegal issues in the past?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. There's differences in form and differences in substance. And just to summarize, what the court found most lacking in the San Juan Capistrano case was a connection between the cost of service and the fee itself. And as the fee escalated, the city hadn't shown that additional sources of water to fund the upper tiers cost more money. So in fact, it did, and by showing that the latter gallons or the supplemental gallons are more expensive than the groundwater gallons that the city can pump for free conceivably, the city needed to show that as the fee escalated, that was tied to scarcer water, that it acquired at higher prices. So it might have done that. In fact, it's in the process of doing that. One city did it, that is the City of San Clemente. So the study that you have that underlies the rate that you started with this year and the increase that was before you this evening is tied to the actual cost of water that you might acquire. Above and beyond that is the issue of penalties that Mayor Portem Baker brought up last time. And Prop 218 on its face, the State Water Resources Control Board, our firm and lawyers who have litigated this issue think that if you impose penal sums on a water conservation ordinance, which was separate and apart from the rate schedule you adopted tonight, that's exempt from Prop 218. It's like a finer penalty for parking, and that doesn't have to be adopted subject to a nexus study. Some people get confused, because post facto, the City of San Juan tried to recast its higher-rate tiers as penalties, but that was a little bit, too little, too late. That's not how it had been on the front end, and that's certainly how it's been done with your current rate schedule and your water conservation ordinance going forward.
Where do the funds from those penalties go to?
Well, they'll go back into the system, but more likely, according to your utilities department and your consultant, if the city ends up acquiring more water than it's allocated from that, the city's going to be paying penalties, and so there's a strong likelihood that those penalties will just about hopefully cover the penalties the city will be paying if you go over that met allocation.
Great. Thank you.
I'm just thinking now about your request, Bob. Joanne, let's put it as a special presentation, and let's invite someone from OCTA. And how do you want to frame the issue? What do you want to know?
I want to know what the vote was, why it was made, and what, how it's going to impact San Clemente. You know, that's really what I want to-
Okay, so that's one slide. I mean, that's an email.
Well, I mean, but that's, I think that, I think we should know on-
You want another vote? I thought what you wanted to know was the key milestones in the 405 project going forward.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's part of it, but really is, why did, why was this necessary to do in terms of local money? I'd like to understand that a little bit better. And then how does it benefit our residents, or how does it impact our residents, or as residents of the county? When we go north, what can we expect, and et cetera?
And how do they justify taking away a lane on the freeway?
OCTA won't answer to that, but-
That we, the citizens of San, of California paid for, Orange County paid for with Measure M2, and how do they justify taking that away and now charging tolls on it?
Also, I think there was like a three-year revenue study that was tied to that to determine whether the toll lanes would be free or not? Isn't there something on that?
That's one of the next steps. There's a TRP coming up-
Well, then, maybe they could explain that to us.
In the next year, but that's, that would be what I thought you had asked for over here, what the key milestones are, what the traffic revenue projections and the tolling scenarios are, the next big step, and will be pretty high-profile.
Ready for second readings? Okay. Yeah. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1596 entitled ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending section 13.04.220, subsections A, B, and C of the San Clemente National Code relating to water rates.
Second.
Motion by Ham, second by Baker. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Or a move that we adopt ordinance number 1597 entitled ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending chapter 13.24.190, subsection D of the San Clemente National Code relating to the sanitary sewer rates.
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Baker. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. I move that we adjourn to an adjourned regular council meeting to be held on June 18, 2015,